The Winnetka Village Council Regular Meeting for February 5th, 2019. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask, first off, that everybody either turn off or mute your cell phones or other electronic devices. And Trustee Dearborn will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, Rob Quormcheck?
Certainly. February 12th study session. John, I had you as being out. The 19th, Bob?
I'm out.
Okay. Any other?
I may not be here.
For which?
Well, actually, the 19th I will be there. Particularly with the 12th I will be there.
Okay. Okay. And any other conflicts for the march? Okay. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. All right. Item number four, Public Comment. This is the time of the evening where members from the audience may come up to the podium, share your name and address with us, and share any thoughts you might have on items that are currently not on the agenda. Would anybody like to participate in our public comment? Come on up.
There you go. Yeah. Live on 1022 Dinsmore in Winnetka, and I own a business called Miranis at Home on Lincoln. I'm here to express my concerns about the music festival. Last year, as you all know, was the second year of the music festival. We had a fantastic event. Many people came to the village, and with it came many stages, the many food trucks, and street closures as a result of that. My business was negatively impacted by the music festival, mostly because we have takeout and delivery service, and cars could not come, and drivers could not come to the front of the business. And the only way to get this delivery or takeout is for them to park far, far away from where the business was. And then our weekend, which was from Friday to Sunday of the following, the Sunday of that same weekend, was negatively impacted. We actually did far worse than our regular weekend. The assumption was that the music festival would bring a lot of new people, and the loss of regular business is more than compensated by the food traffic and people who will buy more food from us, let's say. I'm talking about just food, part of it alone. And that some of these people will come back to Winnetka, order from me, buy more clothing, gifts, et cetera. That did not happen either. We had, part of it was that there was ample supply of food trucks, that more than sufficient for the need of people who wanted to eat something, but also, it was the crowd that was not really looking for anything substantial, but mostly a slice of pizza, hamburger, or a hot dog. So the impact of this as a whole for me, I can speak for myself, was negative. I have talked to few of my neighbors around that are not necessarily in restaurant business, and they've always also indicated to me that they did not benefit from the music festival for similar reasons. I had also comments from my customers that, in general, they would like to stay out of downtown Winnetka in those few days, because they just don't like the crowd that comes to Winnetka. Now, we, I brought these concerns to Michael Mortella, who was the economic coordinator at the village. Couple of times I had meetings with him and talked to him about my concerns. I also talked to Cindy Plant, who is the current economic coordinator. And information I have about this year's music festival is based on what I've been told by either Cindy Plant, or what I've heard in the newspapers about what the current, this year's, this year's music festival will be. The village has not contacted me about where this is going and how the plans are carrying it out, and I have not, if Chamber of Commerce has communicated with merchants, I have not received it, because I'm not a member of the Chamber of Commerce. My concern is that, the way I've heard it, is that again this year, the whole thing will be moved to the east side of Green Bay Road, and one of the stages will be in that parking lot behind the community house, which means that the Lincoln will probably will be closed again, and I'm back to the same situation that we were last year, losing a lot of business. I think the village at least should hear about our concerns, and if there is a way that we can avoid closing of Lincoln, because it impacts a lot of businesses. I talked to some people that were questioning, I'm not an expert about how to place these things, the stages, et cetera, but I've heard that some people say, why don't we use the Village Green instead of closing Lincoln and putting the stages here and there? I don't have the answer to that, but I, please, know my concerns and the concern of a lot of people who are on Lincoln.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Mariani, let me see if I can arrange a meeting with the organizers and you, so you can voice your concerns and see if any accommodations can be made. I mean, you know, we are a supporter of the music festival, but we, you know, we're a sponsor, but we aren't the prime drivers, or the organizers, or the managers, or anything like that. I mean, we obviously issue the licenses that allow it to happen, but I think a dialogue with the organizers, you know, with Scott, and Vale, and some of their people, might end up, you know, resulting in some sort of a compromise that could at least, you know, I am sympathetic to the, you know, concept that if you've got a delivery business, somehow or another, you've got to be able to get your product in and out of the store. So Scott's out of town right now, so when he gets back, I'll make sure to mention it to him and see if we can get something put together.
Okay. Thank you, Ms.
But they, this year, the Village Green will be used as one of the stages, right?
Right.
With the family, so, you know, we, they are trying to use venues that'll be less intrusive, but just so you know, that is definitely in the plans for this year.
We appreciate it, as Mr. Rint said, it's a good idea to get a meeting between the organizers and some of the merchants. I'd be more than happy to get the merchants together to bring them to that meeting.
Sure.
If I can add one item, on your, on your delivery side, just an option to think about, possibly just being able to get from your facility with a golf cart to a loading area for a truck, just as an idea, throw it out there.
Right. Right. I discussed that option with Mr. Myers last time, because I said, at least have a station where people who want to pick up or deliver can go there, park, pick it up quickly, and go. But he said it was not possible, because then he had, we had to include so many other people in that pool, and was not feasible at the time.
Well, let's open up the conversation and see if we can find a way to work it out.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming out and sharing. Really appreciate it. Would anybody else like to join us for some public comment this evening? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period and move forward. Reports, trustees. We'll start down with John.
I have no report.
Andy?
No report.
Bob?
No report.
Penny? Village Attorney?
No report.
Village Manager?
Nothing tonight.
I guess we've all been doing nothing.
I would like to say, though, that although we've been doing nothing, I think that the Water and Electric Department has been doing a whole lot, so I just wanted to publicly say thanks to the staff for everything they've been doing with all the water main breaks we've been having, so.
Sure.
And the street crews.
Yep.
Yeah, right. Exactly.
Well, and I will say that, you know, prior to all the snow events, I had some conversations with the folks at Public Works and Rob about our snow removal, particularly in the downtown area. And I want to say that, you know, the new standard is now that they remove all the snow from building facade to building facade, so that people can get out of their cars and, you know, easily access the businesses that are available there, and they have done a tremendous job. Kind of interesting, last Thursday, I was in Willmett getting my haircut, and I was right at, oh, Central and Willmett Avenue there, where, you know, that kind of odd intersection, and I was sitting in the chair, and I have a picture, but I can't put it up on the screen, because we don't have the technology yet. But the, the, the snow piles along the street where people were parking were up to my hip.
That's right.
And as I sat there, I watched two, you know, toddlers and a mother trying to struggle their way over. They couldn't even open the door, because they were, you know, parked parallel against the snowdrifts. And then when I came back to Winnetka and saw how easily our shoppers and residents were able to move around, so I want to give a big shout out to Steve, and Jim, and the crews, because they really did put forth the extra effort, and I think it showed.
Well, you know, and thank you for mentioning that, because you don't notice when it's not there, and I was just in Winnetka, so I didn't even think about the fact that, that the snow piles weren't there, so, thank you, which is great. And also for the sidewalk plowing, which I know has been, so I just, again, want to say thank you, because that's hugely appreciated, so thank you very much.
Yeah, it was really a great effort. I know you can't see it, but, this is what they were dealing with in Willmett while we were, sorry, Peter.
I live there.
He knows all about it, but we did not have this, so I'm very proud of the effort put in by our people there. Page two. Approval of the Agenda. Does any trustee wish to remove an item on the consent agenda for a separate vote? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve the final form of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda, I'd like to ask the village clerk to read the items on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Approval of Village Council Meeting Minutes for January 15th, 2019, regular meeting. Approval of the warrant list dated January 11th through the 31st, 2019, in the amount of $1,175,529.28. Resolution Number R 11, 2019, security for construction on state highways for adoption. And Resolution Number R 13, 2019, Parkway Tree Trimming Removal and Maintenance Contract, also for adoption.
And the timing couldn't be better for the tree service, looking at this storm that's out, supposed to come through, so let's get this one passed in a hurry. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda by omnibus vote?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Swirk?
Yes.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Lanfier?
Motion carries. Thank you. Item number eight, Ordinance Number M 1, 2019, authorizing the disposition of surplus personal property owned by the village of Winnetka. This is up for introduction and possibly adoption. This ordinance would approve the disposal of obsolete village equipment. The approval would cover calendar year 2019, and give the village manager discretion to dispose of the items. And we have Police Chief Mark Hornstein here to review. Mark?
President Rint's counsel, thank you. The majority of the items on the disposal ordinance are standard and customary, that we get rid of every year. It's a combination of Public Works vehicles, Police Department vehicles, equipment from Water and Electric. The item that I want to specifically just take a minute to talk about tonight has to do with some firearms that we want to dispose of. It's not every year that we have this type of an item on the list, and I wanted to just talk through this with counsel, so that you were comfortable and had an understanding as to the history of these weapons and what I'd like to do with them. When I started in the department in 1993, we did not have any type of secondary weapons, meaning the officers simply had 9-millimeter handguns that they carried. The police chief at the time, Bill Gallagher, recognized the need to improve public safety, and in 1995 purchased six MP5 9-millimeter submachine guns, single fire, which I'll give a differentiation and clarification to that in just a minute. Those were in service for about 10 years until 2005, at which time there was a better tool that was identified to improve public safety, and we transitioned to DS Arms AR-15 rifles that were deployed in the squad cars. Those were in service up until 2014, when we upgraded to Ruger AR-15 rifles. So as we've done a recent inventory of our equipment that we have, we've noted that these six single-fire MP5 submachine guns are really of no use to us anymore, but I recognize that they have value. So rather than them being sitting in one of our safes, I'd like to look for an opportunity where we can safely and lawfully dispose of them and return some money back to the village. Because they are classified as submachine guns, there's limitations on how to go about this disposal. These weapons cannot be owned or purchased by a private citizen, so Mark Hornstein, private citizen, cannot go and buy one of these MP5 submachine guns. In order for us to lawfully dispose of them, we have to file with the ATF an application for transfer. That also entails identifying a licensed federal firearms dealer that would be willing to purchase these weapons. We would file the application with the ATF, National Firearms Act Division. If the application was such approved, then the transfer would occur. We would have the ability to choose who we would sell it to. And then the other thing that's important to note is that once the firearms dealer receives these weapons, they are bound by law as to what they can do with them, meaning they cannot turn around and sell these and put them in the hands of a private citizen. They can only be resold to law enforcement. So there's a safety net built in place that weapons, once owned by the village of Winnetka, through this process can only be resold to another law enforcement organization, not into the hands of a private citizen. So what I'd like to do is go ahead and do that, because it's an opportunity to, again, return some money to the village, to put to use, is they're really not doing us any good sitting in our vault back at the police station right now. I'm comfortable with the other secondary weapons that we have, the AR-15s, to provide the appropriate public safety, and I'm seeking to dispose of these MP5s. So the reason why they're, also, the reason why they're classified as submachine guns, even though they're single fire, is because the trigger packs in these can be modified to full auto. So that's why the government classifies them as submachine guns, even though we don't have them to be functioning in that capacity, they're just single fire. So.
Great. Well, thank you, Mark. Any questions for Mark?
No.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Let's see, where was I at? Is there any public commentary on this particular item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back up. Any council commentary or additional comments on this?
How much did the village want for the F-350?
I know. This just kills me every time this list comes up.
No, but that's, I appreciate the public discussion about what we do with, with our, the weaponry that we don't need anymore, so that's reassuring that there is a legal process, and it will only go to other law enforcement agencies, so.
Great. Okay, seeing no more discussion on this, first off, would we be interested in waiving introduction and giving Rob the ability to move right forward on this?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. If we're waving intro, I'm going to need a motion to waive introduction of Ordinance Number M 1, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Lanfier?
Yes.
Trustee Swirk?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. Now we move forward to adopting, right?
Correct.
Ordinance Number M 1, 2019. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Swirk?
Yes.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Lanfier?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
One more off the list.
By the way, I would, I would note that you guys were talking about the pickup trucks, which is on the next page, not in terms of.
Yeah, I don't want a submachine gun. I've got problems in my house.
Just to be clear, if anybody wasn't.
Yeah, that 350 would be a nice little toy. Okay. Item B, Public Hearing, Rezoning of 1311 Scott Avenue. Ordinance Number M 2, 2019, 1311 Scott Avenue Annexation and Map Amendment. This is up for introduction and possibly adoption. A public hearing on the requested annexation and zoning map amendment has been advertised for tonight's meeting, where Village Council will take public comment on the proposed annexation. The public hearing on the proposed annexation of 1310 Scott is now open, and David is here to summarize the item.
This is an item the council has discussed a couple of times before regarding lots along Scott Avenue, that a portion is within Winnetka and a portion is within Glencoe. This property owner is requesting that the portion that is in Glencoe be annexed into Winnetka. The Glencoe Village Council has taken action on the disconnection, and so now the annexation ordinance is on your agenda for consideration. We've also placed it so you could also waive introduction and move for adoption.
Great.
Happy to answer any questions?
First, let me, first, let me turn to the audience. Are there any audience comments on the requested annexation and zoning map amendment? Come on up, sir.
My name is John Gurley. I reside at 1293 Scott in Winnetka with my wife. We've lived there 40 years, and part of that, we lived at 955 Greenwood for 10 years. I was part of the group that annexed in 2006. Prior to that, the council sent us a, and the, and the Glencoe Council sent us a letter in July of 1992 and January of 1993, asking us to sign a petition to annex. We did that. Never heard anything until 2006. 2006 issue arose, as you, some of you may recall, in the midst of the home rule vote. My wife and our neighbor at that time, at 1287, which is just east of us, went to vote on Tuesday morning, was told they could not vote on the issue, because somebody on Scott Street had complained about the fact that they were really a Glencoe resident. I don't, I never got the, we never really got an explanation for that. That's background. Following that, the council went through the procedure with Glencoe, and you adopted a resolution, and most of us filed petitions and got annexed, I think. That's my point. I really, I'm not opposed to this at all. I encourage you to get it done, and let's get this fixed. It's been a problem for 100 years, and when, when, if I ever get to the point of selling my house, I'll have to explain this to somebody. I'd rather not have to explain it. But I do want to provide a little bit of information, so maybe you can take this into account as you try to get this resolved finally. And that is, we still get two tax bills. Matter of fact, I just got two tax bills the other day, an annualized $6,000 increase. That's beside the point. I don't know what you people receive. I analyze that, because this is only a $3,000 increase. We still two, we still have two PIN numbers. We still get two tax bills. And David, I mentioned, I was the person that called you a month ago, and you were very helpful, and I appreciate that. We, we still are apparently paying property taxes for the Glencoe Park District, because that shows up on the statement. I don't know whether that was ever part of the original deal or not. There's nothing in the papers I have that indicate that we are going to continue to be paying Glencoe property tax bills, and so I suppose they still get 100% of whatever allocated on our statement, and you then, you've then reimbursed over the first five years, whatever taxes were typically split for, for Glencoe. I would just urge you, just one more comment, this has been festering for years. What was really irritating about the home rule vote, and the fact that we were disenfranchised, some of us really considered the possibility of filing a injunction, just to try to get it resolved, because everybody really wanted home rule passed. We did too, so we just backed off on that and went, went through. But if there's any, I reviewed the documents that were distributed. I see nothing in there about any taxes being continued to be paid to Glencoe. I don't know whether or not in this new, what, David, you have a comment?
Well, I mean, I, yeah, right.
How does Glencoe have the ability to tax our residents?
They're different districts.
I mean, it'd be interesting to see, did you say the village of Glencoe, or did you say the village, the Glencoe Park District?
Yeah.
Well, I'm sorry?
You just mentioned the Glencoe Park District?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is the village of Glencoe also taxing you?
No, I only see the, the Park District.
Because.
Interestingly enough, it's on the larger, we have a $12,000 portion and a $3,000 portion. $12,000 portion historically was Winnetka, the smaller portion was, was Glencoe, even though nine-tenths of our property was in Glencoe. I never understood that split, but that's the way it was done. And, but now the Glencoe Park District portion appears in the larger portion of the bill, and we still have two PIN numbers, so, I'm sorry to bore you with this, but I would urge you to get this resolved finely, so that when we, us old geezers could sell our house and we don't lose a buck, because I don't really have any idea whether or not we've been fairly taxed over the last 40 years or not, given the problems at the assessor's office, anything could happen, but this is sort of a separate point, and I would ask you to do anything you can to help the residents on Scott get this straightened out, and if we, if there's anything we can do to get one tax bill with one PIN number, and I'd be prepared to provide the legal fees or whatever costs are incurred, but we will never get it done without some support from the village, so that's what I'm urging you to take into account as you negotiate this deal with Glencoe and wrap this up, so this has been going on longer.
Sure. At the time, what year did you annex, finish the annexation into Winnetka fully?
2006.
2006.
The only annexations there's ever been.
Can I actually, just can I ask a quick question? Because the, the school board did a similar, they acted separately, because they're separate taxing districts, but, but there was a similar bifurcation of the lots on Scott, and the school board took action in the 2000s. So the village and the school board, the Winnetka Public Schools have, have acted, but does the Park District would have to take this up separately, correct?
That's my, that would be my understanding.
Yeah, right.
We would like to get copies of your tax bills, so if we can arrange to get those copies.
Should we pay them for me?
No. Or should we, no? But I think part of this is confirming the plat consolidation, so that the PINs can be consolidated.
Yeah, do you want to get copies now, or?
David, would you mind grabbing copies for?
Well, I could bring you copies in the next day or two, whatsoever most convenient.
I'll grab this item.
Okay.
Right. So, but then I think it's a matter of understanding, how did the plat finally get filed, and then taking that second step with the Park District?
Yeah, right.
To make sure that they're actually lining up where they're supposed to be.
The Glencoe Park District you're talking about?
Yeah. Because you, essentially, you want to have co-terminous taxing boundaries, where Winnetka Park District, the village of Winnetka, Winnetka Schools are one, are one tax bill for you, as opposed to anything to Glencoe.
I mean, I guess, I'm not, I don't understand why Glencoe would be particularly interested in giving up their taxes that support their Park District when the deal was done without that, but that.
It's a, it's a separate taxing entity, so it has to be taken up separately with the Park, so you would have to petition the Park District to.
But if we have the authority to consolidate the two properties into a single PIN, that would address the problem. We do have the authority to do that, don't we?
But.
My understanding is that should have been done as part of the annexation, but we'll have to tear into a spot.
Mr. Gurley, do you pay for, for Winnetka Park District as well?
It doesn't appear so, no, but I use it all the time.
Well, so, but that's also a good trigger to check the other properties that annexed in 2006, to see if the Park District is still an outstanding issue.
I'll answer your question, okay?
Public hearing is still open, so you got to hang, hang in.
Yeah, Winnetka Park District, we do.
You do.
Yeah, so I'm getting whacked every time I turn around.
Well, that would be for the one.
You got to go play more frisbee golf.
I'm retired. I have no revenue stream. Thank you all very much. I appreciate you listening to this.
Thank you.
Because it's.
You got to go play more frisbee golf.
I'm retired, I have no revenue stream. Thank you all very much, I appreciate you listening to this.
Thank you.
Because it's really confusing, so...
Yeah, and as I was preparing the letter to go out to the other property owners, I looked at the letter that went out the last time, and the letter did note that the council's action would only impact the village, that it would not impact the Park District, the School District, and even thought it may have said the libraries, because I assume they're separate taxing entities in each body, and I do know since, I've heard that the School District has taken action, but I'm not aware of the Park District taking action. And that may be why they're still separate pins, because the Park District is not adjusted its...
Because that one taxing district that's left, okay?
Yeah, and if anything, he shouldn't be paying to both Park Districts. I mean, she should be paying to one or the other, I would imagine.
Well, the portion that's, the portion that's in the Winnetka Park District, and then there's a portion that would be in the Glencoe Park District. But we'll take a look at his bills.
Okay, there is any...
Do you get any benefits with this? Like, you get like an extra set of beach passes for Glencoe, or?
I don't think so, I don't know. But, so obviously then, if you're going to have to negotiate with the Park District as a separate taxing entity, all of us that were annexed in 2006 would have to be petitioned in order to go through that. So this might be a bigger project than just the, what, 12 that are, that are left that you're talking about. Because I'd really like you to get this done, if we can do it.
Sure.
And I'll, I'll pay the legal fees for everybody, if that's what is needed to get done. Okay? Thank you.
Are there any other people in the audience that would like to speak to this issue? Hearing none, I will declare the public hearing as closed. Is there any other further council discussion on the matter? Okay, what do you think, waiving intro?
Well, based on what we just found out, is there anything that we should have in this ordinance that's going to prevent this thing from happening?
It's a separate taxing body.
Yeah. Okay.
So we can't reach over the fence, so to speak.
So, so the 11, the 1311 Scott people, they'll have to go on their own to the School District and to the Park District?
Well, I think...
You know, or we assist somehow and...
If, I don't know all that much about real estate, but it seems to me that, you know, the homeowners have some action against one or other of the Park Districts, because they can't both be taxing on the same parcel. Now, if it's split, where, where one tax bill is Glencoe and one tax bill is Winnetka, that's a different animal.
Yeah, but the one tax bill that's Winnetka might be the whole property now. I'm not sure without seeing it.
Right, and they might have just piggybacked on, on our boundaries without actually legitimatizing their claim to that tax revenue.
But what's in front of you is an affirmative step to get a lot of this cleaned up with respect to the village's issues, so that you have consistent zoning, you can vote where you want to vote, right? Those are two big issues. But the Park District is going to, I think, in terms of how it may play, what the, we don't know exactly what the Park District boundaries are up there. It's conceivable, they follow the line of split lots, but we need to confirm that, and then it's going to be a separate discussion between the Park Districts to see if this can be facilitated to a successful resolution.
So like 1311 Scott, should part of their process be consolidation of the two plats, of the two PIN numbers into one? And at that point, they've eliminated the PIN number that Glencoe would tax. I'm not sure that's so easy, but...
Right, I don't know if the Park District's boundaries care about pins.
Right.
It might just be a physical...
They actually don't, because one of Winnetka Park District's property is actually in Glencoe. Over on, it's north of Scott Street, tucked back in up against the railroad tracks, and it's a Winnetka Park District park, but it's in, it's definitely in Glencoe, there's no question about it. So maybe the boundaries, you know, and the School District boundaries aren't...
Right, right, they're, right, they're not, and, and the Park, yeah, I mean, there are Winnetka parks in Northfield, part of, part of, yeah, so the, the boundaries are not completely contiguous, and, and the part of, for example, the part of Winnetka that's south of Winnetka Avenue across from, you know, Nutria and that area, that's part of the Kennelworth School District, although it's the village of Winnetka, so it doesn't all match up exactly. But it's the split lots that are really difficult.
Yep.
Is the, the resolution of the pins, is that the county issue, or is that our issue?
We don't assign pins.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's, that's the county, right?
At the very least, I think we need to reapprove this.
Yeah.
Let the people know, if this residents, if there's this issue that's out there.
Right. Cleaning up not only Park District, but, you know, School District, if there's any outstanding issues there.
I'd suggest that we go ahead, I'd waive, what is it, introduction and go ahead and vote, so that we can move, proceed.
Okay, well then, can I have a motion to waive introduction of ordinance number M-2, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Lanfier?
Yep.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yep.
Trustee Kreip?
Yep.
Trustee Swerke?
Yes.
Motion carries. May I have a motion to adopt ordinance number M-2, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Kreip?
Yep.
Trustee Lanfier?
Yep.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Swerke?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. And we'll get copies of that and see if we can figure it out for you.
Thanks for bringing it up.
Yeah. Thanks for coming out.
Right, on a lovely night like this.
Feel free to encourage your neighbors to go through this process.
Or at least see if they have the same problem.
Anyone who hasn't annexed?
I survived by minding my own business.
We don't do that in this room.
Good evening. Okay, item C, resolution number R-12, 2019, approving an agreement with L. Marshall, Inc. for water plant roof replacement. The water plant roof replacement project is budgeted for 2019, and here to review the bid response and recommendation is, oh, it's not assistant, it's Water and Electric Director, Brian Keys.
Thank you. So in fairness of identifying who did all the heavy lifting on this, Assistant Director Giovanni McClain did pull this together. As part of the capital plan for the water fund, we did identify that there's some roof replacement needed. It's a long rectangular section over the basins. The roof's actually not leaking, but from the underside, you can see that some of the decking is actually visibly deteriorated from moisture ingress, we believe, coming through the existing roof, which is decades old. So we did budget for it. In the capital plan, we budgeted $100,000. We did a formal bid, a pre-bid meeting. We got four responses back, they're on page 85. The lowest responsible bidder was a company called L. Marshall, and we've used them previously. So we're requesting permission to move forward, so there's going to be a section of deck replaced, new rolled roofing in some gutter, I think he calls them scoops, but some, the drains, in the amount of $69,000.
It's a good way to start the year off.
Yes.
You're going to need it with all these water main breaks.
I'm going to need some favorable financial treatment, yes.
Okay, any questions or comments from the audience on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it up here. Any comments, questions, or other thoughts from council? None. We'll move forward. May I have a motion to adopt resolution number R-12, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Lanfier?
Yep.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Swerke?
Yes.
Thank you, and thanks for sticking around, Brian. I was looking forward to seeing Giovanni tonight.
Let him know that.
He obviously has, does he have a longer ride home than you do, or?
No, I actually, he stayed last night with your crew on a water main break, so I said I'd come this night.
You're a good boss. Thanks, Brian. Drive safe. Okay, old business, none. New business, none. Appointments. Now, I got two things up here. Which one am I supposed to read off of?
Let's read this one.
Okay. Okay, here we go. I've got something tonight, finally. May I have a motion to appoint Matt Bradley to a full term as chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals, replacing Joni Johnson, whose term is expired?
So moved.
Second.
Voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion to appoint Matt Bradley as the Zoning Board Appeals representative to the Plan Commission to replace Joni Johnson?
So moved.
Second.
Voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion to appoint Joe Stewart to replace Ann Grubb for a full term on the Landmark Preservation Commission?
So moved.
Second.
Voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion to reappoint Chris Foley to another full term on the Environmental and Forestry Commission?
So moved.
Voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item M, may I have a motion to reappoint Chris Foley to the Plan Commission as the Environmental and Forestry Commission representative?
Second.
Voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Hopefully I'll have more next week. Item number 12, closed session.